Everyone welcome to the company's on day six. Anyone in the audience who have any suggestions, raise your hand over to you. My team, we uh this right from pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your role, please.
Yes, I will. Councilmember Gletsch.
Here.
Councilmember Stern.
Here.
Councilmember Gilmore.
Here.
Mayor Nesko.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Saab.
Here.
And Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Council on the Lakeship District, the. The manager. We're adding, we did add one from last, was on the.
Wasn't on the looking at it, it's on the agenda, uh, action number six tonight.
Councilman Morgan wants to share.
Um, I do. Shelton Memorial Park. We had a board meeting and we're. We are very close to completing a uh computer summary of all the plots up there. And that people can access the plots a lot more online and check out who's there. And um they're still keeping the cost down, so you can have a low-cost dignified funeral at Shelton Memorial Park. And every, and uh. All the books are looking good from before. And uh we've taken measures to make sure that, well, maybe we should get into it, but the books are looking a lot better. We'll put it that way. And uh they're hoping. That we we can do something about the water rates. Um because they want to keep the park green. Uh the whole year and not let it go brown. So that's my report. Thank you.
Is there anyone ready to see the agenda? Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda as published.
Exactly.
Right, there's a motion and second to approve the consent agenda published. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Vote.
Eric. Right, now if my rights are public, make comments on my city business. Comments that be made to the entire council, not even people, council members, speaker, friends, meeting person that's in fact or more in the media. And reasonable disruption of comment in the capacity of the meeting done. You must have a full comment.
We do, Mr. Mayor. Our first speaker is Nick Altieri.
Good evening. Uh my name is Nick Altieri. I'm with Peninsula Arts Association and I'm here uh simply to announce. That the Peninsula Arts Association will have their spring art show. Uh June 2nd through June 6th here in the lobby. Uh Shelton City Hall. And I wanted to thank the council and Mayor Osko. Uh for having us, hosting us here in the lobby. I especially want to thank Jordan, who's your uh. Administrator, but I know she wears a lot of hats, maybe you think the law. Uh especially thank her. My goodness. Um. And again, June 2nd through 3rd and on Wednesday 4th, we'll have a private reception. We'd like to hopefully see all the council members there and Jordan. Uh to join us. And uh pretty much that's it. I want to say thank you. For hosting us, allowing us to have this event, so. That's why I'm here. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Appreciate your support here.
My name is Dave Mortensen.
Let it call you.
Dave Mortensen, you're our next speaker.
You good?
Yeah, I'm good.
My name's Dave Mortensen. I was a longtime educator here in Shelton. Uh thirty-four years, not all of here in Shelton, but most of it, okay? I grew up here. I love this town. And I'm very concerned about some of the paths that we're taking right now. Um. Where we, where I started, we, I started, it was going down Highway three, coming into town. I saw just garbage built up everywhere and I said, you know, I'm gonna get involved and I'm gonna help clean that up. As we got into it. We found that it was so big. Much bigger than we thought. And so. We decided, uh Mason County Club approved, we broke up and found the art, our own group called No More. We're tired of this, what's going on? And some of the things that um. What we stand for, we have. Our own mission statement, educating the public at the locations and problems associated with the homeless in Shelton and Mason County. Putting pressure on public officials. To enforce the laws regarding illegal camps in talent in Mason County. Using legal action against landowners who allow. Camps to enforce cleanup of those areas. Enforcing existing ordinances and RCWs that are often overlooked. Thus creating a huge negative impact. Our top priorities are getting rid of that ETS truck. It's, it it brings in all kinds of. Terrible things to our town. Enforce illegal camping in the city of Shelton, Mason County. Inform landlords of the illegal camping on their land and take action. To enforce cleanup and closure of community life, and we know it's closed now. Uh but that, that's one thing that we, was on our agenda. We started a petition and we're gaining support uh through business owners in this area. And we. We gotta do something. As an educator. Like I said, if you don't take care of the small stuff. It all becomes big stuff. And we have not taken care of the small stuff, and it is big right now. There are camps up on the hillside above. Uh the yacht club, there's areas that are. Five feet thick of garbage, there's needles everywhere. It's, it's hideous. And you know, I spent four weekends picking that up and realized it's just, you just couldn't do it. We need your support and we're here to work with you, not against you. One, to get this done. If I have a handout, I'm gonna give it to Eric, to give it to you. You may have already seen it because I know I'm brand, spreading, there's one copy. Yeah, here's your copy. There's forty pages.
What did I make the?
Close to forty pages of homeless camps. We gotta do something about this. It's time. No more. We have to do something.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bill Hyatt.
Good evening. I'm Bill Hyatt. Compared to most of you in this room, relatively new to Mason County and Shelton, only been here a couple of years. I moved to Tacoma partly because of our homeless problems I had up in Tacoma. I personally suffered a huge loss where a homeless person burned down my warehouse. So I know what can happen with the homeless people. We've got what's called a homeless. Um industrial complex. And if you go ahead and Google that, it'll show you that. There's really a no effort to really stop what's going on with the homeless problem. The ETS truck that we sat down there and watched the other day. In the span of one hour, there was twenty people that went into that facility. They spent an average of three minutes in there. They came back out, several people went back in the second time. It's a pipe piper effect. When you have something that's dispensing. Methanol or whatever they're just dumping out of there, we talk to the individual. This is a paid venture. All those employees are days ten of them. They are paid three years. They're here four hours a day. There's four of these trucks. And three brick and mortar stores straight before. Uh Western Washington. You don't see the homeless problem up in Bel Air, you don't see it up in Pittsburgh. I can't go to the post office any longer to get my mail. Because they have to close it. Because the homeless people are sleeping inside of the building. So. It affects me personally. But I cannot come down here at my convenience, get my mail from the post office. I have to wait till the store, the post office is open. It affects me. I'm seeing gangs tagging going on in buildings downtown corridor. And I'm also seeing tennis shoes thrown across the car lanes. That's a common. Sign that gangs are tagging that area, that there's drugs available. And there's also gang activity going on. So. Please, we've got to do something. I was part of that Mason County crew. And over the period of eight weeks, we cleaned up nearly seventy thousand pounds of garbage off that hillside. That was all trade, all transferred by hand. Oh, please. Work with us. We want to be part of the solution, not part of the problem. Thank you.
That's all we have for general public.
We have a presentation tonight from the National Society, Liz Arpa.
This picture is from Pittsburgh. This was the International Pittsburgh School. Uh in pictures about eighteen, it's about nineteen hundred, somewhere in there. Um excellent. So the first quarter was not so busy. It has just shy of six hundred people. Um five international visitors. It will be really interesting to see. What happens and what is going on with international travel. Um. But I believe, yeah, there we are, Australia, Canada, Japan, and then visitors from fourteen states. So the museum leaders, people here around, which is. You know, festivals are fabulous for bringing people in. But it's nice to have something that they can go to. You know, when it's just. You know, they came in. A few weeks ago and they go, why is everything closed on Tuesday? Except for, so. Um. So anyway, um. Really busy with emails, research, things like that. It's fun. So I had to write this down, um because my friends are so small in there. Um we've had about. Maximum about about um. Sixteen thousand views on the post. It's, yeah, download, um. And then um. Four hundred and forty-eight interactions on our. On website, or excuse me, our Facebook page. And um. And then with our website, it's like, you know, the next page. We have about twelve hundred users on it and um a maximum. Dimensionation, which is pretty good. Um. And. Yeah, so anyway, our books. Donations were made, um artist calling. It's a very popular book. And then mentions are talking. I'm excited. This is our current exhibit, uh more than a building, early schools in Mason County, so it. Takes the approach of schools being more than just for education. But they were being centered, so there were probably being a hundred. Small schools with just maybe fifteen students. And I just, I love this picture. This is one of uh our collection. Um a heckman photo. And we're not sure of the location. But it's probably. Uh nineteen tens, maybe nineteen twenty. So this will be open another month and I think we're going to have a. The art exhibit um by John Piles Saffron. Um. We have a walking tour, finally. Um you grab a designer and then she did this for her job. It's. Lot smaller, more economical print. And I will bring some. Um upstairs at some point. We also invite you all, we're having a walking tour on the seventeenth. Two o'clock, we meet in the museum. And that will, um that's. That, that will be put on by uh Mike Fredson. And um people that continue to tour the building house, we got them to let. Us um. Take a tour and kind of basically our tour guide. Um. I think that's all I know. Are there any questions?
Any question? Okay. We have some propositions, um I'm just putting them up. Deputy Mayor, I'm everyone and I'll read the other. One is economic development. Got me? That's me. Right. Whereas, the city of Shelton recognizes economic development is essential to fostering vibrant, resilient, and full economy. And the Mason, and whereas Mason County Economic Development Council, EDC. As Mason County's associates, development organization. Has led efforts to recruit new investors, support entrepreneurs, retain and succeed businesses. Multiple industries, sectors, and force products, agriculture, aquaculture. Healthcare and manufacturing, advocate for secure funding for critical infrastructure projects. And help expand economic opportunities in the region. Whereas, in two thousand twenty-four, EDC supported more than a hundred and twenty-eight local businesses through technical assistance, planning guidance, export training. And on-the-ground support. Including in-person visits and follow-up partnerships with SBA, USDA, and Evergreen. BizLink. And whereas, the EDC actively promoted Shelton and Mason County at business-friendly location. Advocating for high-impact projects, including tech, food processing, manufacturing, and aerospace. Representing millions in capital investments and potential job creation. And whereas, the EDC cooperating with local schools and colleges, including the Shelton School District, Olympic College, the Evergreen State College, to support jobs with training. Entrepreneurship and workforce opportunities. And whereas, Economic Development Week establishes the National Economic Development Council. Highlights role of economic developers, strength of the, strength of communities, and creating opportunities across all sectors. Now therefore, it needs resolved. City Shelton recognizes that the week of May eleventh through May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five, this Economic Development Week will remind individuals. The importance of this community celebration, which causes expanded opportunities, better lives, moving society forward. And I will sign this sentence today. Next one will be Public Works Week.
Very much so. Whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance. To sustainable and resilient communities. And to the public health, high-quality life, and well-being of the people of Shelton. And whereas, these infrastructures, facilities, and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts. Of public works professionals. For engineers, managers, and employers at all levels of government and private sector. Who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation. Water supply, water treatment, and solid waste system. Public buildings and other structures and facilities, specials, or, 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 whereas, it is the public interest of the citizens. That employers and children of Shelton gain knowledge and. To maintain and ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public work. First responders and public works programs. In their respective communities. And whereas. Later twenty twenty-five marks the sixty-fifth annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Flash Canadian Public Works Association. Be it now. Resolved, I, the mayor, do hereby designate a theme aid. The week of May eighteen through twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities. Events and ceremonies designated to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees. And to recognize the substantial contributions they made to protect our national health, safety, and body plan. Will be signed this day after the meeting.
We actually have a couple of our public works directors here. We have Brent Armstrong. He's our assistant public works director. And we have Aaron Nix, which is, what's Aaron's great title?
Another assistant public works director.
Another assistant public director. Thank you guys for all your hard work and I'm sure everybody, we got it out there. You guys out there, they paint holes, lines, making sure that our sewers are working properly and and our water is is healthy and safe and. You guys do a great job. Year after year, we get awards in our sewer plant and that's Brent back there, he's one of his. His responsibility to make sure that happens. I think we've had one probably five or six since the last year. That is words total, two or three of them, that is probably apology. That's also great. Just letting you know, that you guys do a great job and we appreciate you.
Our first, thank you.
Now, our first business item, or third business item, our first action item is Brent Armstrong to talk about the resolution for the VR headwork upgrade design.
Evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. Um this was a. A VR headworks upgrade design. Uh we do have a little change from the previous um. Uh with all the business agenda, we have to amend the contract. Um. We did the selection off of our on-call list. Uh the granting agency allowed us to do that. We. Um just went through the RFP process for that earlier this year. And. That process has a limit of three hundred thousand. So. With this contract amendment, we have the uh amount up to six hundred thousand to cover the four hundred and eight. Uh three hundred. And five dollars and forty cents of the digital cost. Um this is covered under um a grant we received from the Department of Commerce. So yes, any change I have is to design the feathers. At the end of year.
All right. Donna, anyone sort of public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Maybe we're reading the resolution number one three seven five dash zero three two five?
Resolution number one three seven five dash zero three two five. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington. Authorizing the city manager to execute a contract amendment and assign a work order with parametrics.
Right, we have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt resolution number one three seven five dash zero three two five as presented.
All right, how many questions? We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number one three seven five dash zero three two five as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote. All right, that's the next, better item for Brent.
Yes. Um very forward, a, another design contract for a sewer pipe removal for parametrics. This um is removing the sewer pipe and the parts rocks in Goldsboro Creek. Um. I think it's changed from the last presentation on this one. Um it's just, um anxious to get ready because of the. Extensive amount of funding that's going to involve this in the waterways to have. Several stakeholders that are uh really for this.
Great. Donna, do you have a public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Read, read the one three seven seven dash zero three two five.
Resolution number one three seven seven dash zero three two five. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington. Authorizing the city manager to execute an on-call work order with parametrics. To begin design on the removal of a sewer bypass pipe within Goldsboro Creek.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt resolution number one three seven seven dash zero three five as presented.
Right, how many questions?
Just wanted to say thank you for organizing everybody together to get this done because it will create. Recreate the natural habitat in the bay. And um the tribe is looking forward to it, the state's looking forward to it, we are looking forward to it, and make it a better, healthier environment for our aquaculture. Thank you.
Questions? Thank you, Brent. We have a motion and a second to adopt position number one, or one three seven seven dash zero two five as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, next action item, the revolution upgrading the library HVAC system. Assistant Public Works Director, Aaron, second one for me.
Mayor, Council, thank you. The opportunity to be here, I actually have two HVAC projects that we're working on. Um I'll address. The library one first. I do want you to know that in total, um you guys budgeted last for this year's budget approximately eighty-two thousand dollars to replace these units. We are going to be under that. I'll go through this as one of the bids came a little bit higher than we thought and the other bid was a lot, a little bit lower. The reality is that we are not going to go over budget on this. We're actually going to be saving about two thousand dollars in total. So. With that, um what I want to present is the library HVAC system. We're looking to replace two, I believe there's four of the seven and a half tonne um air conditioners. Um and gas furnaces um within that facility. Those are, I've been told, over about twenty years old. And I will tell you, because now I've kind of taken over facilities to try to help that group. I will tell you, they spend a lot of time on those HVAC systems, making sure the fans are working. They do everything in their power that they can. We are at the point where we got to replace it. There's no other option. So. In this particular instance, um you guys had, we had budgeted thirty-two thousand. We got several quotes back. The actual. Low bid that we got was for thirty-seven thousand, forty-two dollars and thirty-four cents. Again, that's approximately five thousand or so above what was budgeted, but you're going to see cost savings in the next one that I'm going to bring forward to you of about six thousand dollars. So. Our recommendation um is to please allow us to move forward with these purchases. And get them in there um to help that facility. Um like I said, they, we have done everything we can to keep these things around and they're just, it's all, it's kind of. Get, get them around. So questions? Have a answer.
Right, Donna, do you have a public comment?
No, there isn't, Mr. Mayor.
Read, read the one three eight zero dash zero four two five.
Resolution number one three eight zero dash zero four two five. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington. Authorizing the city manager to approve contract number two five dash zero zero seven dash SPW. With capital heating and cooling for the completion of the library HVAC replacement upgrades.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move to approve resolution number one three eight zero dash zero four two five as presented.
Right, we have a motion and a second. To approve resolution number one three eight zero dash zero four five as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The item, Aaron, upgrade.
I'm going to correct myself. We've actually done, are doing three HVAC, the other one is the amp, the uh the dog shelter. Those were under the spending thresholds for your guys' approval. Those projects are already. So I just want to make you aware of that. Similarly, same issue, there's one head unit in there trying to cool up slowly. It's just not sufficient. So. I just wanted to make you aware of that. There's actually three HVAC systems that we're working on. The next one that I want to talk to you about is the, the museum HVAC systems. Um those, um we're actually going to be replacing three. They're more of the head unit kinds, the ductless pipe. Um that you put on and you'll see in the back, um they've identified them, three-ton of B-series light commercial heat pumps um. Um those are going to be included within this. Again, I mentioned the cost. Originally, um you had budgeted fifty thousand dollars for this particular project. The low bid came in about forty-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine thousand, or. Six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents, savings of about. Six thousand or so, so we are making up for that. There, we are not going to go over that eighty-two thousand dollar limit that was put on there. It's about eighty thousand. So. Again, those systems are very old. They need to be replaced. We've done everything we can to make them get. Reach their useful life. They got to get replaced. So we're asking you to please approve this so we can move forward with that work as well.
Donna, does it have a public comment?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. We have Liz Arpa.
First, I want to thank you for looking at this. Um we have been struggling with those three units ever since I've been there. Um. You know, one doesn't work at all. And you know, we call and they send service people and you know, they're doing their best. But they are evil. We had an elderly gentleman came in and goes, oh, I put those in, you are just retiring them. And I was just like, you know, so how many are you doing? So anyway, um. I really appreciate the fact that, that you're really putting this consideration and. We truly appreciate it. It's, you know, it's really desperately needed. Thank you.
Right. That's all we have. We're in motion. So I have a reading, we can read the resolution number one three eight one dash zero four two five.
Yes. Resolution number one three eight one dash zero four two five. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington. Authorizing the city manager to approve contract number two five dash zero zero eight dash SPW. With capital heating and cooling for the completion of the museum HVAC replacement upgrades.
Thank you. More motion?
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt resolution number one three eight one dash zero four two five as presented.
Okay.
All right, comments or questions? Right, we have motion and a second to adopt reason number one three eight one dash zero four two five as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
One more item, Aaron.
Yes, sir. Thank you again. I will say those previous ones you just approved, those were, I believe they're downwind monies that we're getting off.
We're actually, uh, using REIT funds.
Oh, REIT.
Yeah, we can, we can be used for, um, for, uh, maintenance of facilities now. That's in legislation that passed several years ago, so it gives us a little more flexibility with, uh,
Thank you.
Maintaining some reconstruction.
And REIT is real estate.
Real estate excise tax, yes.
And reporting fees, right?
Just, nope. Real estate excise tax.
The reason why I brought that up, you guys, is this next one that I have to before you is all going to be funded into grant funds. I'm going to give some, and it's deserving, some credit to Mr. Harris, our Public Works Director, in that he has been advocating and pushing staff to get as much out of this particular project as we can. Some additional things that have been added because of some cost savings. Two new chlorine buildings are going to be going in, and the idea being, we need to have a safe place at our wells to actually inject chlorine and make it safe. So that's going to happen. The permits have been obtained. Those are probably going to, you're going to see that at well one and three? Three, four, three, four, um, in May. Um, in addition, we've actually been able to do some additional upgrades, and what you have before you is basically a, uh, a contract amendments, the last one for this project. We need the engineer to actually do a little bit more design. We're going to actually put in some transfer switches. All the ones that we have are very updated. Um, and we're, uh, what else did we include in here? Um, transfer switches, plugs, plugins for the generators, those kinds of things. Those were not included originally in the design. As we experienced cost savings, we were able to add these into that. So what we're asking is for you to approve amendment number five, which is going to allow Gray and Osborne to finish that design work on those items. And we will be under budget, funded mostly with grant funds. So do you have any answering questions?
Do you want to say a public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
We're reading the resolution number one three eight two dash zero four two five.
Resolution number one three eight two dash zero four two five. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to approve contract amendment number five to the professional services agreement with Gray and Osborne Incorporated, titled Well One, Three Hub Project Design Services.
Thank you, Donna. Good motion.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve resolution number one three eight two dash zero four two five as presented.
I didn't, oh, sorry. Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
What's that?
Who did the second?
Both.
Pick one.
Thank you. How many questions?
Just, uh, thank you again for increasing our quantity and quality of water in our city.
I was going to go a little footcrack myself earlier. I totally didn't see Jay there. Jay is also a public works director, and I'm not sure why I skipped you, Jay. Until he said your name, I go, oh, Jay's here. Jay's been a great asset to the city of Shelton, and, and I don't think about his leadership that we've been able to do a lot of the hard stuff that we're doing right now with very minimal staff, by the way. Uh, thank you, Jay. Sorry, I, I skipped you. Until he said your name, I totally spaced you off. All right. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number one three eight two dash zero four two five as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Right. The final action item is the resolution for lowering the pump lower angle side booster station public director data information. This is an addition that was not on our, uh, looking ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council, Jay Harris, Public Works Director. Uh, sort of a public works night tonight. I appreciate it. Uh, you know, we're trying to turn from, uh, being reactive in our maintenance, our needs, uh, to proactive. And you're seeing, uh, you're going to be seeing more of us, right? Uh, we have a large backlog of projects right now, and so, uh, you're going to see us on your agenda quite a bit more. Got a bunch of projects going to bid soon, that sort of thing. Get a bunch of things under construction. And so this is sort of the front side of all those. Um, tonight, we waited too long. Uh, we have a pump that, uh, burned up at the Angle Side Booster Station. Um, it's over in the public works yard. Uh, there's two pumps, and they're wood motors on. And, uh, takes water from the high school tank and fills up, uh, the Angle Side Zone, uh, reservoir. And, uh, what happened, one of the pumps, we rewound it. Uh, every five years, we're rewinding the motors. Uh, one of the motors completely burned up, and, uh, it sizzled the whole unit. Um, so the Department of Fire has, uh, scanners. We need a, a lead pump and a pump waiting there. And so if lead pump gives out, the light pump will turn on and take care of the mission. We're down to one now, so I don't have a backup. So, uh, this is the reason for this resolution tonight, that I want to, uh, call an emergency. There's extended lead time to order the pump and motor, probably about seven weeks. Um, we're worried about tariffs, what's going to happen there, and availability. We'll see when we actually get a purchase order signed, get out, order the equipment, get it put in before summer commands pick up. Now, at the end of the day, if it does take a while, we do have a backup. Um, what happens is, uh, we'll connect the mountain reservoir to the Angle Side Reservoir. They just happen to be both same, all elevations. Um, it's going to reduce the capacity in our system, but we'll still be able to service the hill if, if we have our, the last pump goes out. So, uh, your fingers crossed it doesn't happen. But, uh, approving this resolution tonight will allow us to move forward. We'll have one new pump over in that building then, and motor. We have a project coming up. It's called the Angle Side, Upper Angle Side Booster Station Upgrade. The design is almost complete. That will give us more capacity in our reservoir up there. The second pump and motor, that's prime driven, will be replaced with that project. So we'll have two new pumps and motors in there, new controllers, new electrical, all sorts of things over there to make it much more robust. Um, we're talking to our insurance company also. Uh, we're spinning money out of the water fund right now to go purchase it. And, uh, we're hopeful that our insurance company will reimburse us for this replacement cost. Thank you.
Right. Donna, do you want to say a public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody want to talk on this pump? Since, uh, have it on me to get that. Right. We're reading the resolution for one three four dash zero one two five.
Resolution number one three eight four dash zero four two five. A resolution of the City of Shelton, Washington, finding that an emergency and special market conditions exist, and waiving competitive bidding requirements under RCW three nine point zero four point two eight zero two A for purchase of a water booster pump.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt resolution number one three eight four dash zero four two five as written.
Right. How many questions?
Um, just one thing again, Public Works Week, thank you so much for what you're doing for the city. Um, we have two new developments coming into town, and so making sure, taking care of our water is, is, is imperative as we move forward. Also, I wanted to thank, uh, former council member, Deirdre Peterson, who gave us a book about how to kill a town. The number one thing of how to kill a town was to not take care of the water. And we're doing that, and we're being proactive about it. So thank you very much, Jay, and your leadership in the Public Works Department, making sure that we have clean and clean and quantity, and quality of water. So thanks.
Thank you for the public question.
Again, thank you for, for this instance, uh, we definitely want to be having water issues in, kind of going into June fire season, and water, and actually water came my belly, so don't want water problems. And that booster station is also responsible for, what, another seven hundred and seventy homes?
In the future, yeah, when the upper Angle Side Booster Station comes online, that helps maintain the Angle Side Reservoir levels. If there's a high fire demand, um, we're able to gain about another seven, uh, seven hundred houses up in that region. Um, so it takes dead source out of the reservoir. And so that project should be bid later this summer and in construction this winter. And, uh, so we're bringing on capacity as part of this next upgrade, uh, pump upgrade project.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number one three eight four dash zero four two five as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Motion carries. All right, we are down. Mark, you have city manager.
Couple things for you today, Mayor, Council. Um, reminder, our community cleanups start this Saturday, um, May tenth. Calanam Park from nine to three, uh, city residents can drop off their garbage or debris up there. We have limited to, you know, no tires or refinances or other paints and chemicals, but certainly household garbage is allowed. Uh, and then, uh, Sun, or Saturday the seventeenth, up off of Summit across from Shelton Outfitters from nine to three, again, a second. Then we clean up events. Um, next Wednesday, uh, legislative wrap-up out at, uh, Public Workshop. We'll be hearing from our three thirty-fifth district delegates, uh, about, uh, the last session, kind of what, what transpired and what to expect, um, and the opportunity to thank them for their support. And again, another water project, which is, uh, five hundred thousand dollars for the design of a new, um, tank in the mountain pressure zone. So that, uh, we're looking forward to, as we've talked about. Um, water capacity and water, uh, storage capacity and increasing that. Um, moving that project along and hopefully seeking funding in the future for construction of that project after the design's completed. Uh, Farmer's Market continues on Saturdays, kicked off last Saturday, right next door at four twenty-five code in our parking lot. So happy to have that going downtown on Saturdays. Uh, there's a Mother's Day, Dash, Sunday from Huff and Puff round uh, Wall Seale Boulevard, Thirteenth Street, or Brockdale, and I'm like, it finishes back there early Sunday morning. And then, um, just want to recognize again, the, um, event recognition night, Marshall Louis Jacobs, last Friday over the state Capitol. Uh, in our PD department, in the near future, there'll be a plaque recognizing, uh, Mr. Jacobs and uh, his, his service to our community and ultimate sacrifice with, um, his, his murder while he was on duty in the city of Shelton. So, um, it would be great to recognize that individual for his, uh, contributions and efforts here in the city of Shelton. That's our first one.
Mention that now, please. A great, uh, ceremony the chief attended. I attended, personally clerk, going off of that, and the governor was there, and lots of, lots of police, I felt really safe. But it was, it was a great ceremony, and, and the chief, I'll tell you the story really quick on, on what happened to him in nineteen thirty-six.
Absolutely. Um, the, uh, prior project becoming our, uh, Shelton Police Officer, who was recently shared in the nineteen twenties. Um, in nineteen thirties, he became Shelton Police Officer in nineteen thirty-six, uh, for, uh, Little Morning, Star Powers, um, he tried to arrest a couple, uh, individuals, their brothers, or um, disturbing the peace. Um, they were drunk, getting bloody problems in local taverns, and, um, during that, uh, confrontation, they ended up taking away an impact weapon, which was called Blackjack at that time, hit him a few times, so he was hit a few times overhead. And, and he's been in the hospital. Ultimately, this is the conversation recently.
And we, uh, many family that are still here in Shelton, local business owners and school teachers, and, uh, there's one that's just, um, honored for that. All right. We have to know how to do this question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I would like to take a moment to acknowledge a couple of things. May is Mental Health Awareness Month. It is also lupus awareness month, and for anybody that does not know what lupus is, it is a chronic autoimmune disease with no cure. It can affect all parts of the body, and it most commonly causes kidney and heart failure. It's estimated that one and a half million Americans are living with lupus, and ninety percent are women. May tenth is Lupus Awareness Day, where lupus advocates wear purple to raise awareness for, and advocate for it here. For more information, I would advise people to check the Lupus Foundation of America's website.
Anything else? All right. Next meeting is Tuesday, the twentieth, at six P M. We have a study session, maybe thirteen, sixteen. That means during that six forty.